Welcome to our regular meeting with council in person and live streamed electronically Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. I apologize for the delay. We were having some technical difficulties. A reminder of Family Day on February the 19th, and also tickets for St. Patrick's Dinner and Dance, March 17th at Rosedale Hall. For the Forget Me Not Club has tickets available as well as here at the township office. So I'll open the meeting with our land acknowledgement. The council and staff of the Township of Montague acknowledge that this sacred land on which the Township of Montague is now located, and this meeting is being held, is the ancestral and unceded territory, excuse me, of the Algonquin Anishinaabe Nation. I'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Craftry, that the regular meeting of council agenda dated February 6th, 2024 be approved as amended. This date to add the information, January 10th and January 24th, 2024, County of Lannar media release and to move information items, 8E, F, G, I, J to action items. All in favor? And that's carried. Disclosure of interest now at our named point in time during the meeting. So moved by Deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Craftry, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated January 16th, 2024 be approved as presented. All in favor? That's carried. Any business arising from our previous meeting? Okay. So no delegations and deputations, so report of municipal officers. Hi, please.
Thank you Chair. This is to bring forward, as council's all aware, our public works manager, Stephen Rockwell is leaving us on February 15. With that, the job is posted with a closing of February 8th. In the event that we need to extend that timeline, we will. If we don't receive applications or qualified applications. So our hiring policy allows for one member of council, the co-administrator and one senior management position to sit on the hiring panel, with a subject matter expert if desired. So Stephen has indicated that he'll sit on as our subject matter expert. So what we're looking for is a member of council to sit on the hiring committee as well.
I'd like to ask if Reed would like to sit on that position.
Yep, she has an interest in sitting on that.
Can I sit on it?
No, so it's, so it's, it had to be like this one, one staff person, one council member. So it's like a 50-50 split. So and then the subject matter expert of Mr. Rockwell, who will no longer be an employee at the time probably.
Suppose we should trust Reed?
So moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that council approve the following member of council be appointed to the public works manager hiring committee. Reed, Karen Jennings, all in favor? Carried. So our reports of committees. Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that committee, that council approve the minutes of the committee of whole meeting of January 16th, 2024, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that council approve the minutes of the Montague Recreation and Culture Committee meeting of November 23rd, 2023, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Let's carry. Moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that council approve the minutes of the Montague Township Police Services Board meeting of November 2nd, 2023, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? Great. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Craftry, that council approve the minutes of the Montague Recreation and Culture Committee meeting of February 1st, 2024, and approve the recommendations contained within. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that council accepts the Merrifield Public Library minutes, November 28th, 2023 as information. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that council accepts the Merrifield Public Library minutes of January 10th, 2024 as information. All in favor? That's carried. Move over to. And no petitions and bylaws. First bylaw, moved by deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that bylaw 4044-2024 being a bylaw to stop up, close and convey part of the east half of lot 23 concession for Montague Township, County of Lannar, designated as part three on plan 27R11450, subject to list interest in RS25787, being part of PIN 05264-0113, brackets LT, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and sealed with the sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that bylaw 4045-2024 being a bylaw to establish user fees and charges administered by the Corporation of Township of Montague, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and sealed with the sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw 4046-2024 being a bylaw to provide for the collection of coastal garbage and recycling materials in the Township of Montague, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and sealed with the sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that bylaw 4047-2024 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a development agreement with Stephen Lewis, the owner of land legally described as part of lot 17 concession fee Township of Montague, County of Lannar, designated as parts one to four, 27R-11972, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and sealed this sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by deputy Reed Carroll, second by councillor Craftry, that bylaws 4048-2024 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the development agreement with 2303303 Ontario Inc., the owner of land legally described as part of lot 19 concession for Township of Montague, County of Lannar, designated as parts one and two on 27R12186, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by councillor Craftry, second by deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw 4049-2024 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of a development agreement with Eleanor Haiti-Giff, the owner of land legally described as part of lot 20 concession three Township of Montague, County of Lannar, designated as part one on 27R12134, be read a first, second and third time and pass sign and seal this sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? That's carried. Sorry, carry forward. Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry. No, no, no motion and notice of motion and under action items. So for Richmond Hill MPP Day Zwa Nonprofit Appreciation Week. That's not this one then?
What's that problem though?
No, that's not that one.
Why shouldn't be action items?
So this was, yeah, the chair had asked for this to be put on the agenda prior to the agenda. So that's why it's in the action. So.
So it was to acknowledge the nonprofit organizations within our township because it is nonprofit appreciation week. That's all it was doing was acknowledging those in our township. Sorry. Yeah. Yep. The next one is our Enbridge Grant Successful Application.
Yeah. So this is a good news. So it's just for information really, but we did put an application into Enbridge back in November for a skin unit pump to go in the back of the UTV to provide that even much more service and fire. And they approved our $10,000 grant request. So that will be coming this year.
That's great. We talked about that back then about how with those fires that are back in there, we can't get back in there and they get a great benefit to it. So it's a, you know, we saw that need. I think that's great. The staff brought that forward and I think it's, it's great that we were able to have that as an extra, extra piece of service, especially in our rural area. So that's great.
Yeah. So it'll be fully funded by Enbridge.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
And then our move forward items, item A, Wyoming.
That mean?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Oh, council's time tasks. Yeah. Okay. So this is just our action tracking list. I just want to kind of provide council updates, especially on the building. Sorry, it's really small on that screen. So the building is, we're still, we're waiting on the, the Class B estimate. That's supposed to come in February and we will bring something back in the meantime. A lot of the other items, it does stay in the side column where we're at with it, but I know the building has kind of been a question with everyone. So. It's just working on that Class B estimate that we're to get back. We did meet last week to discuss pre-qualifications. So pre-qualifications will be going out shortly to make sure that anybody who's bidding the job is qualified based on what we're looking for. So that process is all started. It's just, it takes time to get these things back, but it's, we're on schedule currently.
Sorry. Now for the information items move forward. Sorry.
That's good information about your buildings too as well to kind of keep everybody moving as well. The E1 I thought was interesting just for the fact that I didn't really understand this. I knew, I know there's always, it seems like things liability comes back to it, to the township, but this isn't in the cases where we hire somebody to do a road and they're doing the road. And in this case, it's a very, an example where somebody was killed by one of the the workers that, of the contractor, but because we are the employer of the contractor of the township, this way I'm reading it. If I'm misreading that, Allison, please feel free to jump in where there is a still, still sort of held against you, I guess you could say, and had to, and then part of that settlement too as well. And I know like a township like ours, if something bad were to happen like that, that can be pretty crippling for us too as well. So I mean, is that something that would be probably a pretty good positive side of us to supporting where if there was an accident or is that, you know, from a contractor is, you know, like we, we would like to not be involved in that, I guess, if there'd be a change.
So Chair through you, with the joint and cerebral, unfortunately, we're always 1% liable if we chose to hire them and that side of things. So. And you know, in our agreements, we obviously put that they are responsible for their health and safety. They have to provide their health and safety statement, their policy, all those things. I don't know the exact background of what happened in this situation. It's all going to hurt to support to say maybe it needs to be a clear definition as far as an employer underneath OHSA. Unfortunately, we're always 1%.
No matter what, the exact, that's, that's been the ongoing sort of, for years now, right? That we talked about. So I'd say, I mean, supporting might just be a good thing. Just once again to have a, I mean, a clear, a clearer picture of this. If, I mean, it makes sense to me, I guess, to support it. We have a resolution for that, I guess.
Any further discussion? All good. Okay. So moved by deputy Reed Carroll and second by councillor Craftry, whereas the Township of Montague believes that the safety of workers is paramount, however, the safety of workers on construction projects in Ontario is not increased by placing liability on parties that do not have control of and are not responsible for the conduct of the work on such sites. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the Township of Montague requests that the province amend the Occupational Health and Safety Act to clarify the definition of employer to exclude owners that have contracted with a constructor or a project, and be it further resolved that this motion be provided to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable David Pachini, Minister of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development, the Honorable Paul Calandra, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, France Joinus, John Jordan MPP from Frontnak and Kingston, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and all Ontario municipalities. All in favor? And that's carried. Our next one is F, municipality of Tweed, license plate renewals.
Ooh, that's a long one. I, I brought this report more just to see what people's thoughts are because I mean, they, they eliminated the, the license plate renewal fee, which I think is good. I mean, anytime we can lose a tax or reduce a tax is fantastic, but Tweed sort of, this, this kind of came up and it was interesting in the sense that if they reinstated that, but more to support municipalities, they use this one, if you, if they, if they reinstated it and just literally divided it up equally between all of the 44 municipalities. At each municipality, you get $2.2 million towards their budgets and everything else. You know, obviously I don't think they would ever do it in the sense of dividing it up equally. But you know, would we want to log you or ask the government or be part of that to say reinstate that, that fee? But only if those fees come back to the municipalities. So I don't know what sort of all of council or the rest of council tier's sort of thoughts are. Do we want to ask the province to reinstate a fee if it, you know, if it only benefits us or is it something we never want to ask the province to reinstate any fees or add a tax?
At that point, I think you're almost better off just add a tax to your constituents because you'd say the government's going to give it back to you fairly. I, I don't think it will. The way that everything gets divvied up by the government as it is, it's always well population wise. So will you get your fair share?
Yeah. Is this, is this, is this one of the solutions or is this not one of the solutions?
I don't believe that this is the solution. I think you're, you're almost better off to say, okay, well, we're going to charge everyone of our constituents 10 bucks or 20 bucks and then you'll get at least your fair share. Unfortunately, the province does not divvy things up and spend Krugan time and time again that Toronto will always get
way more.
way more than Ottawa. Ottawa will always get way more than Montague. So to say that you'll get your fair share.
And that's right. And that's why it was the same way. Right. I was like, I'm reading that and I'm like, I don't know how that would actually work in our favor. Like, hey, listen, if they divide it up fairly, that's huge for like the small municipalities, right? Sure.
Fairly, yes.
It's never gonna hit the convenience. So.
And like fairly based on not, we have a ton of roads, so we have a ton of infrastructure and we don't, we'll never get enough to fairly divvy that up considering that Ottawa has so much.
Yeah. This is not an avenue to work. And I, I wasn't trying to, you know, when I, I was curious of the discussion or your thoughts. No, I think I was just getting the thoughts from behind that way. So I'd say, yeah. It's not something I'm, I was never on favor. I just was more, more curious of the discussions. I don't really care if you thought.
Well, it's just in the closing of it, right? It says, we propose that all money is collected through the reinstated license fee renewal system be used with the best interest of volunteers. But it doesn't mean that they're going to divvy it up evenly. That's why it was like, if that's not the wording, then.
It's not really something that's really probably going to ever, ever be invented in Montague. Like it's, there's another avenue up to how do we support the more rural side of things and push that avenue.
And then how do you figure out what's evenly is it land based? Is it, is it infrastructure based? Is it everybody's view of what would be even and fair that might vary a lot?
Yeah. And this may not be the, we all know that the, the Ontario government and our, to our federal partners too as well. I mean, so much has been clawed back from municipalities that they, they, there, there needs to be more coming down to us for sure, but this may not be the avenue for it. And I guess I was curious of that too as well. If that's the, yeah. So scrap that one? That's the, oh, yeah.
So Chair through you. I'm just not sure where they got their $6 billion number. In 1819, it was recorded as 1.1 billion of the light vehicle permits that were, the licenses that would no longer be collected funds for because you're still collecting funds on all the heavy trucks, the snowbells and all those things. My understanding whenever they removed it was to try and reduce some of the administration costs of having so many people and, and currently with it being difficult to get employees. There's the cost to print the stickers and do all those things as well. And I think if it's anything like our CCBF or the gas tax, it's not distributed evenly. It's, it's put towards city centers. So for me, I think I would have a difficult time or, or maybe not recommend the council just where did the $6 billion figure come from? So because is that the total licensing that the province collects? Or is that the licensing less, the heavy trucks less, the snowbells less, the vehicles that are still being licensed? But that's just from a staff perspective.
So do we go ahead and read it still and then defeat it?
No.
Let's not read it.
Okay. So the next one is Townes Newmarket. Please policy and procedure by law update resolution.
That's just like, which I'm surprised it's not happening yet. I don't know what they're waiting for is allowing us to use digital content to, you know, when we have notice meeting notices, all that kind of stuff, right? So I mean, that's like, we might as well keep pushing it because I don't know what, I don't know what the hold of this. Everybody, yeah.
Yeah, we've already, yeah. So we have supported it.
Have we supported that one already?
Well, we've supported going to the ability to do electronic notice. So, and that one went to AMO. AMO is kind of pushing that as well. So they're well aware. Yeah. To council, but we've.
We've already hammered.
We're trying to get back in a circle again.
Yeah.
Why is this not being done yet? So let's say, that's perfect. Yeah, that's good.
240110 county council media release.
Yeah, I was gonna, I just, I was gonna bring it up real quick because I usually try to give a little bit of an update as far as kind of what's going on at the county. And my email that was just done and now deciding to. What was that? Is it? No, sorry. So the network, but that could be a good way of being so slow. So real quick for the the meteoric stuff. I think one that's kind of neat is that so last year we hired somebody to win County to basically be a settlement officer to help with new Canadians coming in as they're moving in and try to help them find places to work and everything else, which is fantastic. The next thing that the county, what we're trying to do is, is to add on to that now too as well and work in a joint tender. This would be all like a federally funded sort of point, which would really help with any of the new settlers that come into Lannar County and Brentford County to either be like five and a half people, so 5.5, five people and somebody who's part-time. That's, that would help all of those people like kind of get ready for into the workforce or, or finding the, the language training or finding the certain training that might help them get in and, and as they move here that we're able to also help them fill the, the much needed jobs that we have in place too as well. So I think it's kind of a, a pretty proactive approach that, that our staff at the county have been looking at ways to look at the need of, of, of some of the employment opportunities that we have in the county and how that some of those, those new Canadians that are coming in that, that we can help fill those jobs too as well. And we're, and we're putting people in place to help with that. But it's also being like, I mean, there's money coming from the feds to help support that. So we're just going after that, just like Allison's created going after those grants too as well. It's, it's going after that stuff too as well to, to make sure that we can, we can have that support. So I think that's a, it's a really positive, positive thing. So I think that's also an important thing for us as council members or people in the public that you listen to this. You know, as you're meeting those, those people that might be coming in and they might be struggling to try and apply and work or they're trying, they're trying to, starting to figure out what they're going to do, that we have the resources at the county that's, that's being supported from the federal government to help with that too as well. So to, to help guide in towards that or to, or to have them reach out to that too as well. So I think that's a, a big bonus as far as, as far as trying to help that out. Other parts too as well as, that we talked about real quick was the childcare funding. I think we've all seen it in the news about how there's a lot of talk about is it being funded properly? And is the money coming down properly? We're having problems with the county too as well and our, and our childcare providers are also saying that too as well because of the freezing of the rates. I think there were the 2022 rates. You know, that year rate or the 20, anyways, they, they, they had froze rates and, and right now a lot of the, the providers are, are really having a hard time with the, the way that those finances are set up for to, to survive. I know in Alberta, we've heard a bunch of stories of some that have closed down as well. I know that's Alberta, but there's, but Ontario, there's a lot that are basically saying we're about to go bankrupt. We're about to close down. So the idea of more spots being open with C well, the way that's working is there could be a counterproductive point too as well. And we also learned from the, from the county too as well that the province is cutting administration funding to as well to that, like the, the feds have said that 10% of the money that can be done can be used to, for, for administration to make sure that it's being administered properly. And the province is changing those rules because they're allowed to, to like 1. something percent and it's, and that's causing a huge negative effect as far as the way that this could be administered. So we're pushing back obviously to make sure that, that they can be and we're, and we're on, we're on the side of the providers too as well because being on the side of the providers helps with all of those families that are looking for that childcare too as well. So I think that's a, 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 a pretty big point as far as whatever we can do to, to make that C well program work better and that the providers are able to earn an income as they're taking care of children to, to survive and to be able to feed their own families too as well. On the note from the last point too as well, I think is interesting about the helping the settlement office, like settlement people with with getting jobs and everything else in our, in our county. We had a really good update with the employment services side of things, especially in Ontario Works and, and there's aggressive plans of the government, the provincial government is kind of, is, is bringing up and our, our county staff say that they're, they're, they're well ready to, to tackle that plan. And the numbers in there they talk about is, is, is trying to get more and more people that are, that are able to work off of Ontario Works and ODSP. And the, the data they have is 30% of adults and non-able adults with a participative requirement to be referred to employment, employment Ontario. So trying to get 30% off of that. But a lot of that data is saying 60% of OW cases to exit to employment. So trying to get just 16% of those people out and then 20% to keep them not, not to come back after one year. So I mean, like it's a, it, it sounds like low numbers, but it does, it is pretty aggressive to try to get more and more people off of Ontario Works into the workforce because we all know that we have jobs that are there for people and how do we get them off, people off Ontario Works into the workforce? And we all know when you have a job and you're doing that stuff, it creates a better society and it makes people have a better self-worth. So we're, I mean, there's, there's a, a big push behind that to try to make that work. I don't think it's an easy task or an easy feat, but I, I mean, I do applaud the, the staff of the county that, that trying to find ways to make that work. And, and I know as a council, we were, we were very supportive of, of anything we could do to try to get more and more people working in our, in our, in our area. Can just get that one, but councils, we, this is one I wonder if we should ever bring back to, to our council is that, is the council supports a tax credit increase for volunteer firefighters. So that one thing is like, right now there's a, what's that? We have a, we have, we've had that before, right? And it's come up before. Now we could support it here, but we supported the county basically that our volunteers are taxed for the first $3,000 they make. There's a push to make it up to $10,000. We support that at, at the, at the county because I mean, it makes sense. I don't even know why. Any, any money that, that our volunteer fire writers are making, why that's taxed is beyond me. The one I brought forward too as well that I, that I wanted us to support at the county, which is the Catcher Release Justice, and it was unanimously supported by all of the county. I think we all felt when we had the police stopping people and, and especially in Montague as they were looking for individuals that were basically they were in jail and they were released and they were back out again. And it has caused, those, those issues have caused some, some turmoil in our, in our, in our community in the last year. So I think it was good for us to support that. And I think that was well felt by the rest of the council members too as well of the county. That's like, we need to stop that because I mean, I, I had a chat with a resident too as well where they say that when they're at home and, and they, in the country and they, they lock their door because they're, they're not too sure if there's a, you know, and that's, we should never have to live in, in a, in our community where that fear is, is, is there for that. So. That's kind of the big things I really want to bring up from the county, which I think is kind of interesting. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
So moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that council accepts the information items as information as presented this date. All in favor? That's carried. No one fit into this other business before. During that, any questions from our audience? Any questions online? So moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, that bylaw 4050-2024 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held on Tuesday, February 6th, 2023, be read a first, second and third time, pass sign and seal this sixth day of February 2024. All in favor? And that's carried. Moved by councillor Craftry and second by deputy Reed Carroll, council adjourned the meeting of February 6th, 2024 at 6:43 PM. Move by councillor Craftry and seconded by deputy Reed Carroll, council adjourned the regular meeting of February sixth, twenty twenty four at six forty three P M. Until February twentieth, twenty twenty four at six P M or at the call of the chair. All in favor? And that's carried.
That's fine. I mean, I have this because it's uh.
I have your taser.
Allison will kick me in back one. Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, sketchup.
Welcome back everyone. Sorry about that. Uh, we're enjoying uh, some more technical difficulties. We'll mostly just need, but that's okay. Uh, so we're gonna open the meeting with the land acknowledgements of the council. And staff of the township of Bonneview acknowledge that the sacred land uh, where the township of Bonneview is now located and this meeting is being held as the ancestral and unceded territory of the Angakamnash Shabbi Nation. Uh, so the adoption of the agenda, so moved by councillor Crabtree and seconded by councillor Kenny, but. Can't do that. You wanna do that, Reed?
I'll do that.
An option, I don't think, so. Are you Jennings at the committee of the. Whole agenda dated February sixth, twenty twenty four be approved as amended this date to include the twenty twenty four draft water and sewage sewer budget. All in favor? Let's carry. So we're going to move uh, just item K to the front as we have Forbes here to uh, help us out. We'd like him to go home and uh, have some beer. Uh, so we'd uh, I guess I, is Kirsten gonna take it first, I guess, or yeah, you're up first, or Kirsten? You can suck forwards and whoever you want.
It's by emotional support.
There you go, yeah.
Good evening, council. Um, planning staff and J P two G are very happy to uh, inform you that we are very, very close to having. A discussion draft of our zoning bylaw, uh, prepared for councils' review and discussion. So the report that you have before you this evening is basically just to give you an idea of. The process, um, how far we've come and uh, what the next few months will be looking like. So um, again, we have, we're, we're almost finished. We're just doing a little bit of polishing and. A draft document will be provided to council. Most likely within the next twenty four to forty eight hours. Um, we'll send that to you digitally. If you'd like a paper copy, of course, that could be made available to you as well. We'd like you to have an opportunity to look that over because we will be bringing it to the meeting of. February the twentieth, um, to uh, hear any questions that you might have, although we're also. Uh, pleased to receive those questions in advance of the meeting if you'd like to. And uh, we'll, we'll go over that. We'll provide you with our, um. Our, um. Process breakdown as to why those changes were um, presented. Uh, these are keeping in mind with our official plant update that we just completed last year. So those amendments in that O P have been captured in the draft zoning bylaw. We've also uh, ensured that some. Uh, topics of discussion that have happened during. The term of council have been um, accounted for in the document. And we've also wanted to ensure that there is improved clarity for the readers of the zoning bylaw. So again, uh, February twentieth, that discussion draft will be brought to council. Um, this meeting is open to the public. It's not a public meeting pursuant to the provisions of the Planning Act. So it, um, I know we do have some members that uh, do come uh, to our meetings and of course they can ask questions. Um, but it's not a public meeting per se. On April the ninth, we will be hosting an open house here uh, at the township between one and four. And that will be an opportunity for members of the public to uh, meet with myself and. And J P two G to ask any questions with respect to the draft document that's been. Uh, prepared and then that evening, a public meeting will be held at Rosedale Hall. And uh, that will be an opportunity for uh, members of the public to ask questions as well. Um, so notice of this open house and public meeting, they're going to be included in the tax mail out that's going out in the first week of March. As we're all very well aware. Not having a newspaper has made things a little bit difficult, so the timing actually works out. Uh, that we can include that notice uh, within the uh, tax uh, insert. So that will ensure that all ratepayers receive a copy of the notice. So there's no excuse for someone not to know what we're up to. Um. I will uh, open it up for any questions from council.
Thank you, Kristen. I think that's great. It's a great product and report, uh, reports to uh, have that mail date like that. And that's, that's fantastic. And that, and that April ninth one, is that something that? Like all the council should be at, or is that really just sort of staff explaining it and then we go to the night, night version, it's uh.
I, I would think that the afternoon open house would be, um, you wouldn't need to attend that, but the evening session would be, would be. An official, obviously.
Yeah. That's perfect. The opening questions, uh, you read again.
So putting it on our tax newsletter and then it'll be on our website.
Yes.
Social media feeds as well.
Definitely.
Then. That best we can do.
Mm-hmm.
Best we can do. That's perfect, yeah.
Oh.
So that's great.
So it's been a very positive experience and uh. Uh, you'll see the financial implications noted on the back of the report. Uh, that council had budgeted twenty five thousand dollars. Um, as of the end of December, we were approximately seventy six hundred. So we're nearing the finish line.
And we're on track for a meeting under budget too as well, so.
I believe we'll be under budget, yeah.
That's good. And I think it's exciting too as well to get that sort of up. And I know it's one that, one of the projects when you were coming on board to kind of tackle, so I think, I'm sure.
It's been a good experience.
Fortunately helpful to us, so that's good. So that's great. Is there any other questions at all or uh, we're good?
So look forward to receiving. An email from me in the next couple of days.
Yeah, look forward to it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's great that we're gonna have it um, uh, like beforehand too as well. It's gonna help us uh, kind of go through it too as well and. Get our bearings too as well.
That would be a document that has track changes in it, so you'll see what the proposal, proposed changes would be.
Perfect, yeah. That's good. Looking forward to seeing that. Then we'll have the bigger discussion.
Yes, for sure.
That's perfect.
Do you have any questions for my? Not at this point in time.
Thanks, Harps.
Thank you.
See you next time. Moved by councillor Craftry and uh, seconded by Reed Jennings, that uh, council accepts the zoning bylaw update report presented this date as information. All in favor? And that's carried. I think we're going to uh. Uh, so the first part is the fourth quarter uh, planning report. Uh, I mean, it's pretty like, uh. Explains everything there. If there's any questions from council at all, I don't think Kirsten needs to go through it at all. This is something she really wants to highlight.
Um, not necessarily. I mean, the. The uh, fourth quarter twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three number of applications processed is, is pretty um. Similar, the fees uh, a bit higher, but we did increase some of our fees in our. In our bylaw, in our fees and charges by law, so that might account for a little bit of the increased revenue. Um, staff are. Always taking calls and meeting with people to discuss uh. Planning applications, so it's actually the first uh, month of this year has been very busy at the end of last year, so. I'm anticipating a good year.
Good. So uh, thank you, Kristen. So moved by councillor Craftry and seconded by Reed Jennings, uh, the council accepts the fourth quarter planning report presented this date as information. All in favor? And that's carried. Uh, next is the fourth quarter fire report. Uh, she appears not here, but I think once again, uh, we have it all in front of us. We can tell that the uh, the fire department had a pretty busy year with. With seventy five calls when we look at the. All the data from before that, this, that's one of the busiest years they've had. Um. And kudos to the, to the fire department. I mean, like they, once again, I mean, they, they just do everything so seamlessly and smoothly to keep us all safe and, and uh, I think it's fantastic. So is any question from council on that?
Comment?
Yeah, for sure, Reed, yeah.
Their public involvement, their volunteering, I mean, out in our community. It's great. It's a great bunch and we should be very appreciative of everything they do in the community.
Hundred percent. Second to none, these are the, the group that we have, that uh, we're, we're very fortunate to have what we have, so.
We're all, all our events.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then now we do that, do that, they do their own events, so.
Awesome. Uh, so moved by Reed Jennings and seconded by councillor Craftry, that uh, council accepts the fourth quarter fire report presented this date as information. All in favor? And that's carried. Uh, the water report, I mean, it's pretty solid scientific right, long as the water is coming back. Clear and clean, which it is, which is, which is great. So no questions on that? So moved by councillor Craftry and seconded by Reed Jennings, that, that council accepts the fourth quarter water report presented this date as information. All in favor? That's carried. Uh, the next one is the building report. Uh. Basically, any questions on that at all? I mean, we had, uh, was it four housing starts? We finished with seven, which was seventeen for the year. Uh, which was, which is lower, but I mean, I think that was felt by everybody all around, a little bit less than we were probably thinking about going into uh, uh. Last year. Um, but other sort of activities were, were nice to see with some of the upgrades that people are doing in their homes and, and, and everything else. You can see the charts there, which is, which is great. Like the, the, the number of. The garage storage buildings, people adding on the decks and everything else. It's uh, it's, it's nice to see that too as well and, and. And the miscellaneous, the miscellaneous projects too as well. So any questions or comments from council about that? And I've seen none. Uh, so moved by councillor Craftry and seconded by Reed Jennings, that council accepts the fourth quarter building report presented this day's information. All in favor? That's carried. We have Public Works, uh, great report once again from uh. From Steve on his uh, probably his last one that he's gonna do, uh, but I think also setting up uh, sort of the expectation of what we'd like to see. Um, overall, and, and it gives a great, great synopsis of what's going on in the uh, in the township. I don't know, Steve, had any, any points to it at all? A few highlighted points that I uh, that I've read through.
I don't know. I don't think there's anything too crazy. I uh, just tried to highlight everything we do and provide a little assault knowledge for uh, those of you that may not use salt too much. Um, just kind of the pros and cons of it. Um, and again, kudos to council. There's a lot of the accounts or the capital projects that you guys approved in the twenty one four budget that I was able to uh. Proceed with and get that moving forward. And then general operations is just kind of. Everything else Steve and the public work crew do in their uh, spare time and. Um, that page, that takes up. Quite a few pages there, so. Uh, just tried to put everything in there that we do and the. I myself just want to thank you guys very much for. Everything you guys have done for me in about three and a half years. Um, I've grown into the successful person I am because of you guys. Um, I appreciate the opportunity here. Um. And it's not gonna be easy to leave, so I uh, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve, for that. So I have a few highlighted points that I think is, that's the, like, from the, the, I mean, it's, once again, great information. Uh, some of the ice ones too as well, like the winter events have been, have been lower than anticipated, which is, which is a great point. And, and I think on that, our public works team actually got to have holidays uh, between Christmas and New Year's. I even spoke to one of our. Our public works guys and it was, they, I mean, they know what they signed up for. But when they get that opportunity to have that time uh, with their family too as well over those times, and we all do, I think that was, that was awesome that, that they were able to enjoy that. And also on that note with the, the public works manager, he was even lucky enough to have the, the privilege of plowing for a couple of storms too as well, which I thought was a uh. Which is a funny note too as well. I think that's a great uh, uh, leading by example. Um, the garbage ticker one, I think was out of interest as well because we saw some people coming in asking for garbage and uh, but the, the great, the, the, the garbage stickers, the uh.
Lots of people.
Lots of people, yeah. So, and we haven't had stickers for a couple of years. So and, and we still had some people going in that, but I think that when I hear about the general comments and it's saying, well, that's a lot easier, that just makes it better. Uh, I mean, it just shows that we did the right decision. Uh, and I know the illegal dumping side of it too as well. I mean, kudos to staff is like, it's like, it is just not tolerable when people do that. Uh, and, and it's awesome to see our staff. Uh, kind of get ticked about that and go through it and try to plotting the, 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 where it might come from. Uh, so we can sort of uh, like I say, just hunt people down a little bit and say like, you know, not, not in our backyard. So I think that, that's a kudos thing of, of not just. Taking care of the garbage, but also trying to follow through to make sure that, you know, we, we're not happy with that at all, uh, which is, which is great. So kudos to that for doing that. Uh, the McGuire Road side of it too as well, getting the swap done and, and Belle finishing that off. Getting through the steps of the McGuire Road, that's one that we, we, we took on that we knew that had to be dealt with and, and it's great that it's just, we just see the step by step and it, and it's fall, it's being followed through. So it's uh. I'm very happy, I'm very excited about that because I know that was one that was been talked about for. A decade or, or more. Um. Staff though, they like to do the above average season temperature. So I think that was a big part too as well, like. The, the roads and everything else like through November and, and beginning December where they, they, they were. It was tough and then I know there was complaints coming in too as well with people making comments about, but that, you, you drive anywhere, Lennar County or. Leeds or Renfrew, they mean, they were, they were destroyed everywhere. And I think the guys did everything they could and they knew when to go on and when not to go on, knew not how to make a bigger mess. Uh, so I mean, that was not an easy situation to deal with, with the way that, that weather, you know, kind of came out. And I think, you know, once again, our guys did everything that they possibly could and I think really recovered really, really well too as well. So I think kudos to um. Uh, to that, I think that's due to the warm weather previously stated, as stated in a lot of rainfall staff continued to grading operations well in December. So they were trying to get out there, trying to do those things. Um, and I think that's uh, that's good. And another note that I thought was gonna, there was an increase in municipal consent file for fiber companies. So that could be a good long-term side of things as we look at maybe increasing the, the type of internet and everything else that could be coming around. So I think that's an interesting point that uh. I guess I wasn't really aware of too as well, but that's, that, that could be good for a, like, a good um. Long-term thing if, if we're seeing maybe being, if that's being laid, I mean, we could be seeing some better internet coming through as well, which is great. Uh. And another one too as well, because this is a huge one that staff. Have been helping to deal with, even though it's not on their free review, is, is the staff receiving increasing complaints about pertaining to the recycling contracting service. Uh, it's really out of our hands. As far as dealing with that contractor, but I know. As far as dealing with that contractor, but I know staff have been trying to deal with the contractor. I think a big part of it too as well is saying like, there's, uh. That's that's illegal dumping material and then by law getting involved. So I think everything that our staff can try to do. Where we've, we've heard that, and 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 trying to work. With Intera and and also with our bylaw too as well to make sure that that. That that goes a little bit smoother as we go forward. So I think kudos to that where. It's, it's like I said, not in their thing anymore, but they're doing a great job. Uh, and also on that note too, uh, you know, a little over three years ago, we we hired Steve. Uh, this, this, this guy, this young guy that came from the the private sector who thought he knew roads. Uh, and he, and he really, he came in, uh, proved himself, uh, has brought forth stuff. That has helped us make our roads, uh, better, uh, looked at our roads needs and our asset management plan and and worked. Didn't just read the document and said, this is what we have to do. He looked at it and said, how can I work this document to make it more beneficial to us? And has changed it to as well to make it work better. Recognizing soft spots, going after those things, seeing how we can do upgrades, uh. Looking at our, at at the, uh, the equipment that we have and making sure that we're, we're getting the right equipment. Uh, I mean, Steve, you grew into this position, you, you, uh, and you really were an asset to this, to this municipality. Uh, and I think you really made it, um, a, a go to spot as far as, uh. You know, how, how, how good we are. So I think that, I, I mean, you're gonna be, you're gonna be dearly missed, but you've also, on that same note, uh, have set us up. Uh, for the next candidate to be walking into something that's successful. Uh, and for them to thrive too as well. And you're leaving behind, you know, four amazing crew member. And and in our outside yard there that that's, that I know will miss you too as well and that they rec, they recognize the leadership that you brought and and. And I mean, uh, they're an example of, their awesomeness is an example of what you, what you, uh, what you brought to as well. So, so thank you for everything you've done for us. Uh, we know you're gonna be, you know, awesome as the fire chief at Lander Highlands. And, uh, you know, and we're glad that you're still, you know, staying local and, uh, we may have to call you and bug you every once in a while. So, yeah, thanks for everything you did. On that note, oh, sorry, yes.
So I think just similar to to kudos to fire, kudos to our public works department. They are a small group of. Individuals and, um, you'll see from that third quarter report, the amount of work that gets completed here. Again, Steve's leaving and he, he definitely is setting up the next person for success, but he's also setting a. Big shoes to fill, um, and an expectation that's, um, very high. So, um. He, like, you, you set an example for not being compli-. A lot of time municipal, municipal workers, we get called complacent, we get, you know, kind of put down a bit. Um, you are anything but complacent and you're always so proactive, so I think that. Will all miss you too in here, not just out there. Um, and I think that everything you've done for Montague is exceptional. Um, and we thank you very much, but whoever's coming in better know that they got some big shoes to fill.
That's the thing, like, yeah, so, I mean, uh, it was. Great to meet you through the recruitment process, knew then that the correct person had been chosen. Go by the gut instinct, that's one of the things for sure. Um, definitely have been a great leadership for our staff. Um, I must say that the crew we've got out there are doing a fabulous job. Um, over the Christmas when we had such terrible weather and stuff, they did great work going through the roads and everything else. And I'm very thankful that we didn't get what the East Coast just got. So I'm not sure whether my weather app or your weather app is gonna be the right one, but I'll certainly stay on hips that way. So thank you for everything you've done for us, Steve, and I wish you the best of, Fire Chief.
Thank you very much, Steve, for everything. And, uh, I, I, we hate to get in the, the email and the texts. That you're moving on, um, but I do wish you the best of luck and thank you.
All right. Emotional time. Uh, so moved by Ree Jennings and seconded by Council Craftery, the, the council accepts. The fourth quarter public works report and Steve's last presented, uh, this date as information. All in favor? You do not accept the report, Steve. Go back and do it again. Um, uh, the septic. Uh, I always wanted to talk about poop, but a little longer than that. Uh, so moved by, uh, Councillor Craftery and I'm gonna say Ree Jennings, seconded by. And the council accepts the fourth quarter septic report, uh, presented this day as information. All in favor? That's going very smoothly, uh, it sounds like too as well. So I think we've done the right thing, uh, the way that we brought it in hips. Um. The staff overtime report, I think things are pretty well aligned and that are managed quite well. There's any really. Points, but I think we're good. Yeah, it sounds good. So moved by Council Craftery and seconded by Ree Jennings, the council accepts the fourth quarter staff overtime report presented this day as information. All in favor? Let's carry. The next one is the. The bylaw, um, report, I mean, this is one that, uh, we've, you know, we've seen our, our new bylaw. Uh, group has done a fantastic job this year and we can see the amount of calls that they've dealt with over the time. Um. You know, when I talk to staff about them dealing with their new bylaw, uh, it's been a very positive, um. Uh, dealership and, uh, they're doing a lot that's really helping to make our residents safer. And cleaning up some of the things that need to be cleaned up. I don't know if there's any for you to add at all, but that's pretty well.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So our agreement was, um. For like a year, a year and a half with the individuals, because at that time council wanted to see if this would work, um. The, the biggest thing that we're seeing is that some of our hours that they've kind of allocated to us are being used, um, for administration to keep track of the. By hours. So we are gonna bring back a contract that's gonna be really similar to pricing that we've had, but more just a monthly fee structure. So we're not paying for them to keep track of every single hour that they're submitting, more of like an average, um. To make sure that those hours that are allocated to us are more directly for like the hands on and it's on the ground type of allocation. But other than that, it's been exceptional. Um, we've had a number of large items that have been dealt with. Um, we saw the number that are ongoing, um, and I would, I would think that the rate payers are also seeing some of the, the changes and reflection. Um, so we're, we're extremely satisfied with, with the current arrangement.
That's great. I think, I, I think it's nice to hear that, you know, we're, we're happy with the arrangement, the way things are going, but. We're trying to find ways to make it better. And I think that's, uh, that's kudos to the, the way our staff think and that's, uh, that's, that's great. So any other comments at all or? Be good, we're doing good there, right? So, um, by Council Craftery and seconded by Ree Jennings, that council accepts the fourth quarter municipal law enforcement officer animal control report presented as dated information. All in favor? Stops is the grants. You want to touch on that, Allison?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. So this is capital and grants. The budget control is not in front of you this evening, just because I had the auditors in last week, so it was tight timeline to get. As many reports as I did. Um, with that being said, we're sitting in a surplus position for the end of twenty twenty three, so there's nothing. Um, as far as anything to worry about for council and we will get that back to you. So this is the capital and the, um. Grant side of things. So, uh, as council is well aware, the capital work on tenor very early last year as well. And we got some exceptional pricing on certain projects. We were under budget on certain projects, which allowed. Again, proactive thinking by the public works manager to go ahead with, um. Projects like engineering and geotech of Roseville Road North in the event that there's any kind of, uh, grants become available that we have shelf ready projects. Um, so all of those are included in there. Um, our facility building, the engineering and and the drawings, all those things are ongoing. As we mentioned, we'll be getting our class B estimate shortly. Um. We don't have the figures back for airport capitals. Smith Falls builds us our twenty five percent and we don't have those as of yet. Um. We have a couple of large items that are coming, like our tandem should be here in April, the fire truck early twenty twenty five. Um, most of our grants have finished up, um, or almost finished up. Um, as far as that goes, now we still have a number as the time of this application. We still didn't know about Enbridge, so we did get that. We still have an outstanding Ontario Trillium. Um, we've been notified that we didn't get our senior active living. It was a bit of a stretch because we don't have a. Sole facility and somebody to really run the program. Um, but we, we just keep continuing to apply and and get the grants we get. And continue to apply to try and get as much as we can.
That's great. I mean, that's, uh, that's good. No, whatever, we get, we can obviously just make the, uh. Municipality is better than, and and I think it's improved over the last couple of years, which is fantastic. So any other comments from council? Are good. So moved by Council Craftery. And seconded by Ree Jennings, that council accepts the fourth quarter twenty twenty three capital and grant projects. Reports presented this date as information. All in favor? Uh, and the development charges, reserve funds, and just what we've kind of accumulated over the course of the year.
Um, so Chair, through you, this, yeah, this is a, a statement that I have provided to council prior to March thirty first each year. So you will see that our collection of DC was just over seventy one thousand in last, the year prior, twenty twenty two, I believe it was about a hundred and one or a hundred and two thousand. So again, with the building, um, and the reduction in the number of homes built, we had, um, less DCs, but still, um. A substantial number for, for Montague. Um, so this is just laying out what we have in balances to put towards those growth related items. Um, which the fire protection services will be utilizing all or most towards the new, uh, fire. The tanker pumper, because we're adding to our fleet, so, um. Uh, we're in good financial positions for the development charges, reserve funds.
Perfect. Any comments from council? Good. That was great work. Now, so moved by Ree Jennings and seconded by Council Craftery, that council accepts twenty twenty three development charge reserve fund statement as presented this date. All in favor? The last one.
Okay, so this evening is the draft twenty twenty four water and wastewater budget. I apologize, I got it on. Smith Falls just passed their rates, um, last night, so we have to wait for them, um, in order to bring forward a report. Um, to, to council, um, in relation to the fees, because our agreements are tied to them. So similar to the twenty twenty three budget. The town passed a five point five percent increase on their water rates and, uh, a three point five on the wastewater, um, rates. So for our, um, Adirano area, our twenty twenty four budget is looking at a five point five percent on the base. And only a one point five percent on usage. Um, and wastewater is three and a half on the base and one and a half on usage. So that is the same as what we passed last year as well, so it's almost a replica. The biggest difference, so Rito, um, is tied directly to Smith's Falls at the one point seven five times based on the agreement from Act ninety six. So it is related, uh, it correlates exactly to Smith's Falls. So this evening, there's not a huge change in the budget. It's nineteen hundred dollars overall, um, on the expenditure side of things. Um, a number of the highlights, I think I'll just go through first, is that a second, so we have a second staff member who's continuing to get their hours for operations certificate. Difficult because we don't have a full time system and to get those eighteen hundred hours is substantial. The fire chief water operator wages was adjusted to a forty sixty split, um, last year, so instead of the fifty fifty. So it resulted in savings in the wages, even though the, the, the pay changed. Um, capital reserves, so we're matching our long term financial plan and adding some additional reserves. Um, so our overall change was nineteen hundred dollars, a point seven percent of our overall budget. Um, being presented this evening to council or to committee, sorry. What that means for the water rates and effects, so for Adirano, the annual increase would be, um, fifty seven dollars and ninety one cents. For the average user of twenty cubic meters, so that's about nine dollars and sixty five cents every billing, which is every two months. Um, so relatively small increase based on the current economic status. For Rito, which is a direct billing in the one point seven five times, it would result in a ninety seven dollar and seventy four cent increase. On an average of twenty cubic meters, um, every two months. So that would relate to sixteen dollars and twenty nine cents every two months, so on that, uh, billing cycle. Again, majority of the funds are coming from the water sewer billings with, uh, about eight thousand dollars. That is received through, um, interest. So our interest has actually been down, um. Over twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, interest, uh, was reduced, which is good, um, in, in that fact, so. We did see a slight reduction in that revenue. For the expenditures, again, um, the break. There were some small, small changes, so a small decrease in the wages based on changing that sixty forty split, even with. Our pay review and that job seeing a slight increase. Um. The insurance costs, we matched it to actual, um, last year, a portion was out of administration. And our water and lab testing costs are going up each year. They drive mileage, um, it's small increases, but we accounted for it. And again, the water, uh, the transfer to reserve went up twenty seven hundred dollars, which is based in our long term financial plan. So there's nothing of any, um, really significance in, in change here for us currently. We are gonna have some items coming up. Um, to change some bulk meters, um, probably in twenty twenty five, and we'll need to do some sewer cambering. Um, we're, again, we're looking for grants for those types of things, um, but they will be coming up. We are anticipating approximately a ten thousand dollar operating, um, surplus in twenty twenty three as well. That we will put aside, um, to potentially cover anything that comes up, um, throughout the year. Any questions?
Or like the sewer cambering, is that, is that, are we worried about lockages and and that kind of stuff? Or is it just like a better maintenance or?
So we have to do it. So, so those, it's something that we have to do every so many years. I know it's five. Um, so it's something that we have to do and it will be, it's on my board. Um, just sometimes. You get grants for that type of thing, so that's what we're looking for.
Yeah. Any other questions at all or, uh? Self explanatory as we. Work with that agreement, so a lot of resolution there. It's nice to get the rates now, though, so we can get them up before the, um, the tax covering and all that kind of stuff, so, right?
Yeah.
So I guess some delays there and, uh, I almost missed all of just, uh, pass their, their budget too as well, so.
Yeah, so last year we had to have a special meeting on March first, so that we could do our first billing of March, which is January's, um, new rates.
No, no, sorry, I just saw the first one.
Yeah, the salt, don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to see. Usually we burn grease, but this time we're burning steam. Oh, moved by Council Craftery and seconded by, uh, Ree Jennings, that council accepts the twenty twenty four draft. Water sewer budget as presented this date and that staff praying for a bylaw for February twenty twenty four. Council be for the final approval. All in favor? Uh, we have no reports, committee, no petitions, no motions, uh, no unfinished business, there were any burning questions from the audience. Anything online, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram? Anything online, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all that kind of stuff? X? Staff chat, whatever, you know, any stuff. Um, that's good. So we're going to go home then. So, uh, moved by Councillor Crabtree. Uh, seconded by Reeve Jennings. That council, the committee, the holding day of February 6th, 2024, now be adjourned at 7:23 PM. All in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everyone, and we'll see everybody again in a couple of weeks.